Call meeting to order, certify compliance with the open records log.
We are compliant.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Millian.
Here.
Councilman Gillis.
Here.
Councilmember Hayden.
Here.
Councilmember Hooker.
Here.
Councilmember Raceler.
Here.
Councilmember Schofield.
Here.
Councilmember Weizenbeck.
Here.
Okay, that's our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just mentioned, the city administrator is covering the meeting tonight. The city clerk is actually at the, her annual conference. It just happens to fall, it seems like an old, does a, on a council meeting and so on, but she's down in the dells for the annual clerk's conference for the state of Wisconsin.
They all plan it that way.
They all plan it that way, so they can. Would somebody like to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. It's adopted. Next we move on to public comments. The floor is open for anybody that would like to make any public comments. Please identify yourself for the record.
I am a vendor for a dog park.
Yes.
Some of you may worry that I don't have enough support coming to city council meetings for the Duran Dog Park and that there's been more opposition than support. Every week at my job, I receive phone calls or letters with complaints about something that our department did. The same thing that we know helped hundreds of people, excuse me. Just because we received a few complaints doesn't mean we shut down our entire department. People will always show up for the negative and assume that someone else is taking care of the positive. Recently, Scott and I had a meeting with Mark Tolman, our regional economic development director with W E D C. And I had to laugh because he mentioned that many times he'll be the only one at meetings with an angry neighborhood while there are a thousand people at home cheering him on. This is the same thing. I know that I have hundreds of people, maybe a thousand cheering me on at home. People will ask me how much longer until this park is open and they don't realize the work that goes into this project. That's okay. That's why we have government in groups like Duran Improvement Group, to work behind the scenes to make our communities better. But there will always be people opposing a project. At first I was saying I'm trying to make this land a dog park, but after some thought, I think that there are other ways that this land could serve the community. Childcare facilities and housing are two of the biggest issues we face in communities across America. The city of Duran has the opportunity to allow the Duran School District to develop this land into something that could relieve some of those issues. Whether the city chooses to use this land for development or to allow a dog park at no cost to the taxpayers, it would be a win for the citizens of Duran. But to allow this land to sit empty and unused for the benefit of a handful of people would be disappointing and foolish. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No scheduled appearance, we move on to consent agenda. The following matters may be acted upon by the city council utilizing a single vote. Individual items which any member wishes to address in greater detail or as a separate item on the regular agenda may be removed from the consent agenda upon the request of any council member. We have the minutes from the regular city council meeting on August 10th, 2022. And bartender license for Tiffany L. Cravenger for the handy mart. Before we go in further, I believe we, chief, if you'd like to speak to item B.
Yeah, so there's an issue with item B and it's completely my fault. Back in 2021, she got a license from the city of Duran. Looking through her criminal history from back in 2021, she had a felony drug possession in Minnesota. She was arrested in Wisconsin, that's the only reason it showed up. And it showed up as an extradition and then further down she had some local charges and they've got dismissed and I misread her criminal history back in 2021. So the city council approved that license on September 8th, 2021. Looking at the new one, when I reviewed it, I reviewed it, obviously read things differently and realized that she has a felony conviction on her record, so. Again, that was my fault back in September of 2021 for telling you guys that she met our guidelines, but as it sits, she does not.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is take item B off and move it down on the agenda then for consideration under the business agenda A2 as it, so we'll take B off. So with the consent agenda approval, the only thing we're approving are the minutes. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. It is approved. Okay, next we move on to the business agenda. Mayor's report, just a couple of things to talk about. As was mentioned by council member Schofield, we will not be hosting a joint cities. We did send out a couple of emails at least, two or three, and did not get a lot of response. Of course, this used to be a pretty popular thing. We always used to get for joint cities, what, 40 people, pretty much every time. But, so we were saying that if we tried it, and again, if no one was interested, we may try it again when it gets cold out during the winter, maybe people got, you know, right now people just have so many things going. Especially now we were trying to do it going up to Labor Day and so on and so forth. But in fact, we only got, what, one city?
One city that actually responded.
That actually responded, so. And, and we used to have representation, most of them, oh, used to have representation from at least 15 different municipalities, 12 to 15 every time, and to do that. So at this point here, we're going to forego, may consider trying in the winter to see if there's some, some cities that would be, cities and villages that would be interested in doing that. Music in the park, going on right now, we're just starting. Just mentioning that, obviously thank the Duran Improvement Group and all the sponsors that put that on. I see they reorganized because of the weather, but I'm sure hopefully people enjoy the, the white sidewalls. Obviously, we know there's interest. The, the phone was ringing off the hook here at City Hall today, asking if they're, are they canceled? Are they doing it? Off the hook, it was quite a few calls anyway from people. But again, I'd like to congratulate that group on putting together a great event and even, even if they have to make some changes because of the weather. Okay, that's all I've got. Any questions? Okay, consideration, a approval of any item removed from the consent agenda. So we'll take the bartender's license for Tiffany A. Cravenger for the handy mart. As we know, we have a recommendation by the, by the chief based on our guidelines for service license. Would somebody like to make a motion or is there any more questions concerning that situation?
So is this removing her license? I mean technically she has one now, right?
Correct. If it was, if it was approved in September 8th, she'd be good until September 8th, so, yeah.
So this came up in a renewal?
Came up in a, yeah.
Gotcha, okay, I was just, wasn't sure.
Hold on, yeah. We thought, we thought she had applied a few years ago, but after looking at the application, it was just in 2021, so.
One, I, I don't have the guide to understand, one felony conviction, is it off?
Yep. Yep. So the guideline is, provided the circumstances of the offense substantially relate to the circumstances of the job or licensed activity, any person who has been convicted of any felony unless duly pardoned does not qualify for an operator's license. And it falls under substantially relate, any drug possession charges falls under substantially relates, so.
Okay? I'll make the motion to not deny the license request.
And you're sure the felony was not pardoned?
Correct, yeah. Otherwise it would have been able to extrateer, so.
Second.
We have, we have a motion second to deny the license request. Is there any more discussion? Comments, concerns?
Are we denying it or are we rescinding it?
Just, I'm sorry, just denying the renewal.
The renewal application.
Renewal application, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then she can, she can work under last year's till when? Or is that the?
September 8th.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion's agreed. Next we move on to administrator's report, Administrator Rasmussen.
Just follow up a little bit, I know the mayor was talking about her legal cities meeting. So as noted, Angie is at the court's meeting starting today. And she was going to make sure that seek out those cities that have to become to this and we said we're going to talk about that as well in our upcoming lead meeting and try to find out, and a little more thing on dates that might work and topics and other. There was another topic that was mentioned by the only municipality we were back home and they were, boy, not, not surprisingly, how do we, how can we get more police officers to apply for jobs? And that's, and keep them. So that was, that's the only thing we heard from them, but we'll keep, we'll keep working on that. As, as the mayor noted, he gets to come in, a lot of people in this room have probably attended some of those meetings, but they're really, they're really worthwhile. It's good, it's a good chance to get together with the municipalities and a little informal and not everyone gets to the conferences and so, again, I think I've always found them helpful in the past. We'll talk a little bit about budget here in a, in a bit, but one thing that always pops up during budget time as well, and I'm sure you're all excited about, is the vacant building ordinance. So I'm preparing the list of those folks that are not in compliance with their ordinance and they will be getting their letters by the end of the month and then we'll go through that process which kind of culminates right about October as we get into the budget cycle as well. On the plus side, we've had some, some people on the list that are no longer on the red list. Obviously, people on the map with, with the burgers and the crowd, that's obviously made some strides forward. Don't worry about buppers anymore and things of that nature. And I don't know that we've got anyone new really on the list, we'll have to search that a little bit more. One of the things we have to look at is utility usage. If there are those homes out there that just don't have any activity for a while, that's a big indicator, so we'll, we'll go through those and get those ready. But for those of you that have been involved in that, that those appeals processes can get a little, get a little heated discussion wise, so we'll keep doing our best.
Has there been any change with that property next to Lynn Colson's on Lincoln on the street that that is?
Second Avenue, East.
Second West.
Second West, I'm sorry, yep. There is not. I will say, we've heard, we, we were contacted by Ms. Colson this week. Weren't sure she was going to be here tonight and she wouldn't specifically say what the concern was, but we assumed it was the property. I did go up there and take a look at it, it's, I mean, there's not a lot of progress being made. So technically, I think it clearly still falls in our vacant building, so that person, the owner, is going to get contacted. But frankly, the house is in better shape than it's ever been. But it's just vacant and I don't, again, we, obviously we haven't been inside, but you know, some of the issues in the past.
So they did some stuff to it?
Oh, yeah, so they, they, they gutted it. The roof is replaced and looking from the road, obviously they didn't lock around it, but there, there's still a hole, I know the Colsons brought this up, but there's still a hole in the upper siding, but it's as big as a basketball. And the rest of the, some soft fascia had been repaired, so not quite sure that why that piece wasn't, so.
Yeah, I didn't know they did anything to it, so.
Yeah.
At least there's something.
Yeah, I've got, I've got an ambulance thing, I guess I'll bring up when, when we get to that point, but otherwise, that's, that's what we all have until we get into the budget discussion.
Okay, any questions for the city administrator on his report? Next we move on to discussion on the 2023 budget process and preliminary meeting dates.
Okay, so we talked about this at, basically internally, looking at some potential dates, which is what I said I would bring to you at the last meeting. So I think from a standpoint of, just talked to the mayor before tonight's meeting, we are still shooting for probably consolidating the meeting November 9th, making that November 16th and having a budget hearing on that date. So I apologize that that affects some of your schedules, but the issue with that is getting our two-week proper notice per statutes in the paper. Unfortunately, the paper doesn't publish till Thursday, so we're, we got basically an hour, three weeks back. And that bumps up against our, our annual conference and so that's the, the issue for why we can kind of need that, that third week in November, so I hope that does work for everyone. The other items that we talked about, again, these are, these are somewhat tentative. The, and Angie has them noted actually at the, at the back for tentative meeting dates. We're looking at Public Works, tentatively from Wednesday, October 5th. And again, my Public Works meeting, this would be, you know, going over Matt's budget for everything. Water, sewer, stormwater, streets, parks, the whole department. So we basically have, have had a full night and typically that's a kind of a two-hour plus meeting. A lot to talk about with Matt's budget. So again, check your schedules and see if that works for you. I think there's a, maybe just a little bit of leeway that week for a different night, but we were thinking Wednesday probably works best. Public safety meeting then for basically the budgets for Stan, Jane, fire department, and Mike for ambulance, we're looking at Wednesday, October 12th. And sorry, I didn't, I didn't mention times, but we're thinking for five-ish somewhere in that neighborhood that works in people's schedules for those that are, that are working during the day.
Once we get those settled, then also that we obviously have to have the funds.
Yes, and that's, and I'm sorry, that, that didn't make it on here. We also talked about that, you know, two, so two things for finance. We're looking probably, because basically we have to get the budget then at least, you know, recommended by the finance committee, so we'd be looking for that one. I'm looking at the calendar for probably the 24th of October.
What do you want to ask us for, for finance?
Finance, yeah, so the, we go to kind of the final finance meeting where we talk about the rates and we talk about, we talk about revenues and rates and the general, general pieces and then the all general overview of the entire city budget that has to get published in the paper then. So, so basically, we would, we're looking at, you know, again, bumping up against the, the lead meeting the previous week, we'd be looking at Monday, the 24th for that meeting, Monday, October 24th, whatever time of day works, but typically we'd be shooting for probably five o'clock. So those are the, are probably, you know, the four definite dates. The other one, for those of you on finance, you know, you've heard me say we're going to have some a fair amount of discussion this year on potential salary adjustments. How we tie in with, with others in the area, some discussion, some final discussion on some of the potential for ARPA funding and some of the, the employee, employee payments that we talked about previously. That meeting is probably, I, I don't want to cram everything on the 24th. So that's a, that's a meeting that's probably going to be one of the first two weeks of October as well, or maybe even the last week of September to get that discussed. So that one's a little more tentative at this point for those of you on finance, but I'll try to have a better idea of that one by the next meeting. By the way, I think, you know, the process that we've been through in the past, in my mind, I think it gives the departments, you know, enough chance to present their, their issues and, and I know the other part of, especially when we're talking about Matt's budget and obviously fire and ambulance to some degree as well, on the capital side of things and that, you know, we'll have those the same night as the departmental budgets for the, for both public safety and public works as well. And again, I think that's worked pretty well. If there's, anyone has any other comments on that or something that they'd like to see done differently or more information, you know, please feel free to let me know.
Any questions on the budget process, the meetings? I have a general outline of what the meetings are. If something else comes up that we'd have to follow, then we would call another committee if necessary. If there was something we had to do. Okay, again, any other questions on the budget process? Hearing none, we move on to public safety, police department. Chief Ridgeman?
Yeah, just have a couple of things. Sunday night, our department got together and did active threat training at all of our school buildings, both, both public schools, Assumption Catholic School, and then we also went out to Lima. We toured all of the buildings. We talked about responses to those buildings and emergencies. And then to follow up with that, Brandon and I will be attending a tabletop exercise with the Pepin County Sheriff's Department and Buffalo County Sheriff's Department on Thursday to also talk about responses to active shooters. And then they're also planning an active scenario training during the winter break as well that we'll be participating in, so. So that's what we've been up to for training wise. Trunk or treat, Christina Hager reached out to me and was interested in doing another trunk or treat again this year. We're looking at a date of October 29th for that. I'll be taking care of all of the paperwork for the street closure, closure on Main Street this year, so I don't know if anybody had any objections to that, but we'll be, hopefully that first week in September, I can have the paperwork ready for that council meeting and we'll look at doing the same thing we did last year for the streets and get that to you guys.
Or to the same weather you had last year?
Yeah, let's hope so.
What time is that trunk or treat supposed to be, you know?
I think it's at five o'clock, I don't know, it's way quick. I'm sure we'll get updated, I just want to ballpark. I'm sorry, 3:00 to 5:00 on Saturday, October 29th.
3:00 to 5:00, yeah.
Yeah, 3:00 to 5:00. Be from First Avenue to Fourth Avenue West.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Any questions for the chief? Next we move on to the fire department, Chief Kane?
You guys had the report for last month. Well, it's gone, so I'm, so I'm here tonight. The only thing, update I got is our mainline engine is going in for service next Tuesday. We're having some issues with it. It's probably not going to be too cheap of a bill, but there's nothing, it's trying to be no more than what we got budgeted, so. Just so everybody knows that we have.
How long is it going to be on service?
Hopefully a day or two, so, that's all I got. Hopefully, knock on wood.
Yeah.
We've got a lot of problems on that truck, but, and it's not the one that we're replacing, so. It's going to be three to 4,000 bucks, I think, from the estimates they, or the phone. They haven't seen it, so they don't know.
And who's doing the work?
It's going back to where it was built, the Darley in Triple Falls.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I got.
Any questions for fire department? Anything else from ambulance? You said you had.
Yeah, just a, just a quick one. It's, so we've talked a little bit, I think Mike mentioned it last night he was here, that, so the department is, is opposed to get some money, some money from the state through Governor Evers' initiative for, for local ambulance services. We also got just today another state grant opportunity that has to be filled out, I think, by the end of November. So I will talk to Director Miller on that too, but I think there's, you know, we talked about this a lot and clearly at last year's lead meeting, that was the one where big push for all the ambulance services, especially smaller ones, really struggling to find people. And it made a lot of overtures to the state and nice to see that some of those get acted on occasionally. So we, we appreciate the efforts and we'll keep, keep plugging away on the potential grant opportunities that we can get for, for the ambulance service and other departments as they come up, one of which we'll be talking about here shortly, so. Again, we'll, we'll keep you posted.
What kinds of grants got you, like, for what?
Training, I mean, it's kind of all over the board. So at this point, I, retention, you know, that's, that's probably the biggest one, so. You know, potentiality for that as well, so. Again, I'll be talking to Mike a little bit more to see what, what exactly we, he thinks we need more than anything. I, as he's shared, equipment wise, we're, we're pretty good shape. So I would assume we would go for some, we will, we'll try to take whatever we can get.
Any questions on ambulance? Next, Public Works Utilities, no rust tonight, so move on to Superintendent Gillis.
Yeah, just a couple of quick items. The guys are out spray patching streets, so you've probably seen, they've been around town. They're pretty much doing it all week. Our guys are doing the work, we're just renting the equipment from, from the highway department. They'll also be out fire flow testing, any new hydrants that we've installed in the last five years, so updating some of that, some of that too. So if you see wa, water running down the roads, you know, it's, there's a reason for it right, right now anyway, so. One other quick update on, on the dog park that I was going to give is I've been in contact with some loggers. Nobody's physically came and been able to look at it yet to give me a number, but every one of them have said that, that, that we would end up having to pay them something to cut it down. The price of that wood is not, there's not going to be enough in two acres and the price of pulp is nowhere near where you would make money or even, even cover the cost of us cutting it down and then still you have to have some clearing and grubbing. Talking with the dog park group, they did have some people that were interested in potentially doing some, some work up there for essentially cost of fuel. Haven't quite dove into that too much yet either, but we are working on it, is on our radar. They haven't been able physically come give me any numbers yet. One thing too, if you did that, in order to get their equipment up in there, you're going to have to, the first thing that's going to have to be done is, is you're going to have to extend the covert and essentially get a driveway because there's no way for them to access that right now as it sits, so. That would be the first portion of the project before they could go and cut it down and get any of their equipment up in there, so.
That's the dog park's expense, not city.
Yeah, the, the dog park would have to raise more money to put it up there, yeah. As we've all discussed, this will be no expense to the city. Other than that, that's all I got.
Okay, and follow up on that second subject on, I have requested the city administrator that we put this back on as an agenda item about that specific location, dog park, at the next meeting, which will be on September 15th, or September 14th, excuse me. And by that point, we'll have some final information concerning the logging, concerning, and hopefully we'll have, and have the other questions answered, but I have requested this goes back on the agenda on our next meeting, September 14th. Okay, any questions for the superintendent? Hearing none, we move on to discussion, possible action regarding resolution 2203A. Resolution, excuse me, 03, a resolution authorizing applying for an urban forestry grant. Everybody should have a copy of the resolution. This is what we need to pass to apply for the grant that we were talking about to concern, to, to have to deal with the ash tree situation. I don't know if you want to add any more?
Yeah, I would just note that, thanks to Matt, Matt set up a phone conference with the, the state forester who's in charge of this program. We had a good, nice discussion with her regarding which, you recall, we talked last time, there's a startup one for, for those of us that have not been involved in this, in this, this program before, and also a regular one, and the startup, we could go up to 10,000 total. The other one is, I think, 50,000. I think as we talked about last time, we were looking for probably the $10,000 at least startup to see how this program might work. She seemed pretty, fair to say, seemed pretty positive that we'd qualify. And looking back through for another resolution, I'm just going to check our, we did apply for one of these back in 2002. I don't, I couldn't, the records don't go far that far back to see if we were able to, if we actually got money for that, but that was for a whole quilt project. So the city has at least looked into it before, passed the resolution, my guess is that we, we applied for it, but again, even under the startup, we got three cycles to get through that, so. I think it's a really, I think, fair to say, Matt, it seems pretty likely if we apply for $10,000 worth, we're going to, yeah, we get that.
Just to clarify, 10,000?
Yeah, 10,000 total, if you apply $1,000.
Five grand, five private.
Okay. Just like we talked about this all.
Yep.
Okay.
How long for the resolution 2203?
It's been offered, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? Second. Resolution 2203, a resolution authorizing applying for the urban forestry grant. It's been offered, there's been a motion second and it's on the floor for any further discussion. Again, as we had said, once we got it, then we would put together the program and how it would be. But we've already had an idea, so we're basically saying is that we received the money, we would come up with a program to split the costs with property owners to get rid of ash trees. I mean, that's the basic reason for doing this.
Reminder that grant is due October the 2nd, for 3rd. And the grant administrator said that if we got that all over, she'd be happy to look through it and make sure that, you know, everything's eyes are dotted, t's are crossed, so. We'll make sure we have that down if this passes.
Okay. Any more questions, comments, concerns? If not, roll call both, please.
Uh, member Gillis?
Yes.
Member Raceler?
Yes.
Member Schofield?
Yes.
Member Weizenbeck?
Yes.
Member Hayden?
Yes.
Member Hooker?
Yes.
Six oh here.
The resolution has been approved, we'll move forward with the process. Next we'll have discussion, possible action regarding awarding bits of the Duran Community Pool Replacement Project. As we know, we still technically have open bids that were offered back a little over two weeks ago. What I'd like to do in this situation is I'd like to give both updates where we're at from Superintendent Gillis and also from Administrator Rasmussen. And then at that point, I'll sort of talk about where I think, where we go from here. So I don't know, who wants to start?
I'll, I'll start since Matt hasn't meditated this really, but just a side note, mayor did ask us, following, you know, some of our discussions last time, to at least talk to the, the members of the SOS committee, the Saver Pool Program. We did get a chance to talk to primarily Mr. Gary Sweeney. They had a meeting last week, he said the meeting went well, you know, there was a number of members that had questions for, for myself and Matt prior to that meeting, we did our best to answer that. We did our best to answer them, um, and so I think, according to Gary, they, they understand where they stand. They need, they need to raise more money, frankly, is where, where we're at. Um, they're still committed to the project, they're still committed to the, you know, the future, you know, designs of the pool. Um, but, uh, but clearly with the numbers that we got last time, um, that's, uh, you know, we got a long ways to go, or longer ways to go than we thought, frankly, we did. Um, Matt and I have talked at length since, obviously, these bids came in, um, you know, fair to say at this point, probably neither one of us have really seen much of a downside to, again, the, the potentiality of bidding this early next year with a little more flexibility for those involved. Um, obviously, before we get to that point, there's a lot of discussions, and I'll let Matt touch on those with other people that we're gonna have regarding back to US Aquatics, so. What, what do you think we can do to even, you know, potentially, you know, get that, get this down a little bit, and, and knowing that the, uh, you know, where we are at with the economy at this point, and the, and the long, um, you know, the, the amount of time before we're starting the project, and the, and the vendors hedging their bets, so to speak. Um, we'd like to think that things are gonna get a little bit better, e- once we get on to January, a little better, a little less length in the timeframe. Um, I guess I will echo that you would hear from, from Matt last time, you know, I don't think we're looking for miracles here. I don't think we're looking for a million dollars less, especially on the pool side, you know, the, uh, the aquatics package. Um, you know, is there some room to talk to some people more about the building package? And, um, I think there is, and I guess with that, I'll turn it over to Matt, and there's still, obviously, you know, some challenges with that, and, but, um, but we're not gonna give up, I guess that's the, uh, the main thing here, and, you know, we've got some more people to talk to on the fundraising side of things, and more work with the pool group, and, uh, we'll continue in the process, and you'll hear about more about this later this year.
Yeah, Scott touched on, on pretty much everything. Obviously, uh, you know, our recommendation is to, you know, not, not, not accept these bids, and, um, I've had a lot of conversations with builders over the last couple of weeks, or pool contractors over the last couple of weeks. Uh, you know, we feel that, that we, we could do a rebid in the springtime, and we would, we would probably see some better prices. Again, we're, we're not probably gonna see the, the full 1.4 million dollars, but we think we could see some better prices. Um, we've discussed things that we could cut out of the pool, and, and what we could do to maybe save some money on those ends. Um, again, not a lot, not a lot can be done that way, like, uh, for example, the building, the only thing that can really leave on the building is the concession area, that outside bath. Everything else in that building is, is cove. Have to have so many showers, have to have so many bathrooms, have to have so much room for pumps and filters and, and everything, so there, there's not really, you know, it's not over, over constructed by any means. Um, the pool side of things, you know, we could, we could eliminate shade structures, you know, things like that, that we could save some money. Um, you know, but in our conversations, it's, you know, maybe 150,000 dollars, you know, not, not a lot, but, but a savings. So, uh, we'll go back to that drawing board and, and, uh, see, see what we can come up with. Uh, there's maybe some other things that we could do too. I know I was talking to some people about liquidated damages. Um, they're, in projects like this, they're, uh, they're, the industry's seen liquidated damages actually going extremely low or completely going away. Uh, 'cause these companies can't control product, so they're gonna basically bid you 60 days of liquidated damages, 'cause they have no control over when they're getting the product, they can't control when the pump comes in, they can't control when the pipe comes in, they, they have no control, so. So they're seeing a lot of liquidated damage stuff go down, um, to offset some of the, the bidding too, 'cause they, they admitted a lot of it. They'll, they'll throw 60 to, to 70 to 80 days just in the bid, just to see why themselves too, so. Um, you know, other than that, uh, that's really all, all I have for, for the time being, so unless you got any questions for me.
Tell us what understanding talking to different people working as contractors are, when, right now, the way the market is, um, and the way that, when they were bidding these a few months ago, going into this, a lot of people are putting escalators in there, 'cause they just don't know.
Correct.
So if they were gonna bid something, certain, so many a feat, they automatically adding a certain percentage to everything, because they're not sure, where if the economy's a little different shape when it comes, uh, and they had a little bit more clarity, maybe they wouldn't have to do that. And that, I think that's generally, not just for this project, but generally, that's the way people are bidding.
They're seeing that, we're seeing that on every project, right? You know, I, I was told by people that weren't even bidding on this project, that pulled plans, that, that basically said, if you'd had this project two years ago, you would've got it done for $2 million, you know, but now, the, the way the economy and everything's, everything's went, and obviously, we couldn't have done that, 'cause we didn't have our financing secured two years ago, or even a year ago, or just a little over six months ago, I think, when we got it, finally got it secured. Uh, one other thing too, I want to touch on, we get a lot of questions about is, this, this cannot, this project cannot be, um, done in separate phases, okay? We, the building and the pool have to be constructed together at the same time. We can't just put a $2 million pool in and, and not put a building in, because you have to have showers, you have to have amenities, I have to have, uh, roof over my pump equipment, not to mention that, um, the surge tank and a lot of that, a lot of that stuff is built into the building. You know, like our surge tank's built underneath of it, the foundation walls of the building are essentially the outside walls of the surge tank, so. These, we can't just build a pool and then build a building a couple of years later, or build a, build a scale, way scaled back building now and, and add to it a couple of years later. These, these, even though we bid this as three separate, um, items, it has to be one big project built cohesively at the same time. You know, 'cause the pool people need portions of the building up before they can finish their product. You know, the, the building people need the pool to do things before the building people can finish their product. So it, it's one, one project that has to be done cohesively at the same time. We get a lot of people saying, well, it's just, let's, let's, we have the $2 million, let's just build the pool, and we'll build the building at a later date. I said, that, that can't happen in, and with rules and regulations and in the way that we have this designed.
Now, we don't have one general.
No, so we have the, you have one general for the building.
Yeah.
So he's in charge of everybody that has anything to do with the building, i.e. the plumber, though, electrical, the mechanical, uh, the mason. Then you have your pool contractor general, he's in charge of everybody that has anything to do with the pool, and then you have your site work.
So I had a conversation with the gentleman in the construction business who said, why, why can't you do it with one general and save money?
We could, I don't necessarily know if there's gonna be, so it's not like we're paying extra money for three different generals. These are just three companies coming into work, getting overseen by me. So it's, so I don't necessarily know if there's a savings hiring one, where there would be a savings hiring one, like, I'm just gonna use, uh, uh, Myron, the company that built the highway shop. I don't necessarily know if there's a savings using them, and then having them go out and find a builder, or, and find a pool contractor and site work. I, I don't necessarily believe there's gonna be a lot of savings in that. We could do it that way, and, and it has a different, has a different bid tactic, but I don't know why, how there would be that much more savings in that.
And we did this kind of specifically thinking we'd get some kind of in-kind, some of the local people would maybe bid lower on certain projects, right?
Yes, that, that was the reason why we split that out like this, we, we did think that we would potentially get some in-kind stuff for the building and things like that, which we didn't get. Um, a lot, a lot of them, you know, I, I don't know.
Well, and the other, if you actually look at the bids though, I mean, you just look at the bid, the pool part of it is, I mean, that much higher. I mean, the, the, that's the thing that's really blowing out of the water here, our numbers, correct?
Correct. The pool alone was 2.4, 2,396,000, almost 2.4 million just to build the aquatics. A, a general, there, there ain't no general like Myron or, or Market, or, we had a general, um, Drakowski, who put a bid in on this, who wanted to build the whole thing. They build formed pools, not, um, shot creek pools like we build, and shot creek pools, we have a formed pool right now. Shot creek's gonna, is, is, is 10 times better than, than a formed pool, you don't have seams, you don't have caulking, you don't have all, all of that type of stuff that goes with it. So they've built pools in the past, but they don't have anybody that can, that can, a nozzleman that can run shot creek. I'm not, I don't know how that works, it's not my industry, but, um, they don't have a nozzleman, and they've never done any shot creek, so they weren't allowed to put in one full-fledged general bid. And we did allow that to happen, if, if, uh, I keep going back to Myron, just 'cause it's simple. Um, they, they could've put a, a full-scale, if they thought there was money to be saved or made, they could've put a demo, uh, a aquatics in a building packaged together themselves and submitted it to us as all three items with a total. They could've done that, it was part, it was in the bids to, to be able to do that, but nobody did.
How much, how much have we spent so far?
Just under 200,000 total, which is exactly what we thought we were, I mean, it was all spelled out with US Aquatics and, uh, and Cedar Corp.
If we, if we bid again whenever, how much more will that cost?
Not, not a penny. And part of that is, we, we have heard from US Aquatics that they are not gonna charge us for any extra work that they might have to do for another bid process. And it's, well, not that much extra work, but there is some, but, um, but yeah, they already told us they wouldn't charge us for that, and I'm gonna reiterate that the money we spent on all those plans, the engineering, the drawings, everything else, is, is not money wasted. We can use that in perpetu- almost in perpetuity, hope we don't get that far.
Hope not. To be exact, we spent 161,000.
161,000. Well, we got that, we got that with US Aquatics, and then we got more with Cedar Corp.
Oh, yeah, you got 176,000.
Yeah.
Total.
It, it seems like we've kind of said that, that, I'm making this stuff up. Now, if we don't have the money, we're not, we're not gonna do it, we're not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go ahead and project, we've got 3.5 million on a 4.4 million dollar project, that fair?
Oh, well, I think it's fair that, that basically, the city cannot afford to front, and then keep his fingers crossed that we're gonna get donations at a later date.
So, if it's spring, and another $200,000 has been raised, do we go forward with the bids, hoping that they can end that cheap? I really, I really, it scares me that we're, that we're cutting the heck out of the pool, we're making such a, such a base model.
Yeah, and I think that that's one of the concerns, the situation with the bids that we presently have. Um, in fact, that was gonna go on to what I was gonna say where we go from here, and, and, uh, I believe we should, we can make the decision at the end of the bid to just reject them and move on. Uh, I was rather gonna say to do that, to get to the next meeting, two more weeks, 'cause what I'd like to do is, by then, to have staff ready for a new schedule, bidding schedule, uh, whether we bid in January, February, however, with, with the idea, uh, on the, the building schedule that we already have, or see if they want, uh, see if we can make some adjustments by then. I think the decision to reject these bids is making itself, from this standpoint, is, 'cause we don't have the money to, the, 'cause we can prove these bits tonight, according to our agenda, but we don't have the money to cover them, and I don't think that the group sitting here will do that. Uh, I wouldn't recommend to do that without, without raising more funds. Um, and also to see if there's some places we can, we can bring, bring those numbers together. So I think that that decision is sort of being made for us, but I, I think at the next meeting to come back with a new schedule, a, a new bid schedule, and, and what would work, and that would be in consultation, obviously, with US Aquatics, uh, is, is the major, and then also with maybe some of the builders, or maybe some, and have an idea of, of what we're gonna do. And in the meantime, in the meantime, uh, what I'd like to do, once we make that decision, is obviously, I'd, I'd like to sit down and just have a meeting with the pool group, major donors, so on so forth, and go from there. Um, the other thing that I'm doing is, um, uh, I'm doing the same thing I did once previously, with, with a different to, to pursue some major donors, um, that, uh, I have some ideas, and, uh, I, I just, that I will initiate those meetings with, with some folks to see, uh, if we can come in with some other folks to meet that, that number, so. Um, so what I was sitting there suggesting is, again, tonight we'll answer all the questions, where we're at. Um, at the next meeting, we'll have it back on the agenda to make a final decision on these bids. We have 60 days, that'll be about 30 days out, and so on, and then come back with a new schedule with what would work, as you said, whether it's January, February, however that works, and, and then come back and, and put a new bid schedule in place. This way, we have something for any new potential major donors, obviously, well, when you, we understand you're short money, so on so forth, these raise more money, what, what are we looking at here, and, and hopefully we would have enough funds to get, to get some of that in place.
Thank you.
The, the schedule will still hopefully start next August.
Yes, but that's our best, still our best case scenario.
Or do we say we're not gonna put a timeframe on it to?
Well, I, I think that's the discussion, because again, the more flexibility we give, I think the better prices we're going to get.
Yeah, I mean, again, these, the aquatics companies are, again, they, they drive this project, and, and obviously, these two companies are the only two companies that could even potentially build this pool starting next August. Everybody else, Newman, the other ones, they said not even, we're not touching you until 2024, so.
So the next question would be, is do we look at another schedule? Um, okay, we have a building schedule that we've already put in place for these bids, that, for the next ones, do we turn on and say, well, guess what? You know, then we're, we're gonna have to look at an alternative, uh, schedule to, to, again, to possibly get more bidders, and obviously to get some better bids, uh, in for the water department.
And those are some of the questions we'll get answered.
Yeah.
We have these future.
And, and do we cut back on some, like, the shade structures and some of the amenities that, to get the bid to come in less? So we can at least get the pool built, and then add it up.
Well, we've said the shade structures, the climbing walls, stuff like that could go.
Yeah, so like, like, the shade structures could go, all of your, uh, all of your amenities could go, it will still be built, so that you, it would basically be a plug-and-play, where once you raised the $50,000 to buy a, a, a climbing wall, everything that we need to basically just set that climbing wall in and bolt it down, it would already be there.
Yeah, so we would be able to add those features as we, correct.
Even, even the play features up front, you could eliminate the top slides and the bubblers and, and the mushroom stuff, and then as they raise 10, 20,000 dollars, that stuff can just essentially be bolted in, and the plumbing is already there.
But does that mean you have to remove it from the plans for them to quote it?
Yes.
Okay. So we couldn't, we couldn't get, leave it as is, and decide, okay, say, say the new bids come in, you know, a little bit lower? We couldn't at that point then take those out?
I think we still could.
We can take things, we, we can take things out, we can bid things as alternates during the bid process, but essentially, you know, like, so we can have all of our basics, so this is our basic package, here's our alternate package. And if the total basic and the total alternate come in where you want it, and you wanna do it all, you do it all. If you, if the, if the basic comes in where you need it, and then you kick the alternates out and do that later bid, if that's, answers your question.
Yeah, I'm just worried, what if we pull all of those items out now, and then miraculously, what happens if we actually do, could, and end up getting another big donor to come through and fund it, well, now we removed part of that out, now we don't have that funding.
Yeah, with stuff that's just half a part of it, yeah.
Bid it as alternates.
Yeah, just have that too, Matt, is, tho- those are, we, we wouldn't be outside the, we wouldn't be in trouble with the state bid process if we're just buying climbing wall to add to our, again, we could buy that on the open market somewhere else, or the shade structures or things like that.
The one risk that Russ, I think, nodded his head to was to not accept the bids with those companies potentially not bidding or rebid. But I think you already answered the question, is, it's kind of in the cards already, 'cause we don't have money before anyway.
Yeah, right, that's.
So I mean, that's kind of where we're at, so.
And I gotta imagine they probably can feel our pain.
Well, they, they, it wouldn't be the first bid.
Right, exactly, right.
Is the sunset clause with the high school, is that 24?
24.
Like December 31st, 24?
And, and clearly, I think if, if we were close to that, I think we could have a conversation, you know.
'Cause that, that was just, if I remember correctly too, just to have the money, funding raised, not necessarily built.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So I think we're fine with that.
I think they're pleasantly surprised we got this far, so.
Yeah, uh, well, you know, and as I said, um, the, the, the idea was, is, and I think it still remains what I said at the last meeting, was the only way we make up this difference is we gotta do some things to cut back, either on costs, either get some better bids, make some changes, a combination of things to go backwards, uh, on the total cost of the project, and then, of course, to go forward, more blood raising, and obviously, um, uh, and that's a several-pronged approach to get there. And, um, as I said, um, I'm already trying to lay some of that groundwork, um, to, to move forward.
Do we give it the full, I know the children, I know, I've updated the schedule, we Do we give it the full, I know, to, I updated the schedule, do we give it the full 60 days, in case there's a meeting and somebody writes a check prior to the 60 days, before you squash it? Is that a?
Well, the one thing about it is, I start moving forward with some of the, cultivating some of the fundraising efforts, maybe we would have a pretty good idea in a few weeks of whether these people are interested or not.
We certainly could, but yeah, I think it's fair to say we're probably have a pretty good idea by the next one.
But again, we can put that, I mean, we've got, we've got the room, that's the thing about it, there's options in front of us, to say, hey, let's give us another, let's go one more meeting at least to see, maybe we can hear that there's some possibilities and, and we can see what could happen.
The good thing, it's always easier to raise money when you already have a big pot, than, than when you're starting from scratch, so.
And, and the one thing you have to put forward to some people to say, well, look what, look how generous people have already been toward this project, you know, can we, you know, is the possibility of, of you being helpful in, in some manner? So I mean, that's, that is one of the advantages. Okay, anybody, any more questions, comments, concerns, as things come up? Information, obviously, will, will keep everybody updated, but as I said, as far as taking no action, specifically denied on the bids, and we would look to have some ideas at the next meeting concerning potential schedules, bidding schedules, building schedules, and then also, obviously, to move forward with fundraising, and have another meeting with the, with the SOS group, I'd like to, to sit down, and, and again, not with all group necessarily, just their leadership, but let's talk about how we're moving forward. Okay. Again, no action there, so we move on, let's pay the bills.
This Peter O'Wan's office right on top, I don't know where they bought that. The Indian was wanting to get paid.
As we said, it looks like we have most of the committee meeting scheduled out, any other committees needing to meet for any?
The only other one that looks like we may have reached is the plan commission. We got one person that has a preliminary certified survey map, two split a lot, and I had a question for the attorney today, and another one that they're working on, so. That's him. Can you tell the difference between where the man is situated for? I haven't heard anything.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, versus, yeah. Versus right at us.
We should try to meet with Earl Fire, too, sometime?
Yep.
Before we get too busy.
Let's report on the new fire agenda, we're, have they even started?
No, I think you have probably, your, uh, final plan review is February something, so.
So, so from, from, so plans get finished from the first bolt going in?
No, plan review is.
Till it rolling, what, how long's that take?
Uh, they don't know, they're having a chassis shortage right now.
See, I ain't making this stuff up, I ain't making this stuff up.
I know the pump, the pump's not a shortage, the Waters Pump Company is way ahead of production, but it's the chassis and all the other electronics, and I haven't been told, potential delivery is, when we do the Candy King, of 23, 'cause we're hoping to have it, to do that. I haven't heard that we want, yet, but.
Make a motion, we approve the vouchers.
We have a motion second to approve the vouchers presented, roll call please.
Oh, member Gillis?
Yes.
Member Weizenbeck?
Yes.
Member Hayden?
Yes.
Member Hooker?
Yes.
Member Raisler?
Yes.
Member Schofield?
Yes.
Their vouchers are approved. Any other future issues or agenda items coming up? I'm speaking on lots of things, always, but is there anything else? If not, as we did schedule there for the meetings, again, that's a little bit floating, I mean, we still could make some changes, but let's have that outlined there, otherwise, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion second to adjourn.